Our pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First in order of business is the approval of the minutes. Oh, I got a whole bunch up here, I just gotta find the one that's still on. Have you gentlemen had an opportunity to look over the minutes?
I have, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes presented.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Now, we have a lot of money to spend here.
Motion is following the blanks on the other three.
Well, you know, I...
Just read them off.
So, I'm trying to figure out what's the way best way to do this. A lot of this is distribution of funds. Uh, let me just read down through them to make sure it's written, it's into the, into the record here. Approval of payroll claims, uh, for June thirteenth of two hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Approval of early claims, six thousand seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Another approval of early claims for eleven thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Approval of Bentonex claims, I always forget what Bentonex is. What is that?
Insurance claims.
Insurance, okay. Approval of insurance claims in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. You have... Yeah. We've got three here that are not on the... That's the... County general claims in the amount of...
Highway claim.
Okay, highway claims, yeah.
We have three there. Let's see, this highway claim. It's three hundred eleven thousand nine hundred forty-six, sixty-one.
Forty-six, sixty-one?
I want to say that again.
Three hundred eleven thousand nine forty-six, sixty-one? This one says miscellaneous funds.
That should be say other.
Should say other highway claim.
No, it's not highway, it's just other.
It says other fund claim, we got a blank here on that one.
Okay, miscellaneous funds is a hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Yeah, that's county general. Should have been a county's.
I wondered if you all like those... County general.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-one, ninety-seven.
Okay, now, Lauren was right in this too, so let's make sure we got my approval of county general claims in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Approval of county highway claims in the amount of three hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Approval of other fund claims in the amount of one hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Approval of June twenty-twenty lift P S A in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Approval of June settlement in the amount of five hundred thirty-one thousand, eleven dollars and ninety-six cents. Approval of June settlement in the amount of six million, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred six dollars and ninety-two cents. Approval of June twenty-twenty distribution in the amount of two thirty, two hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred forty dollars and seventy cents. Approval of June twenty-twenty settlement for exam of records in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars. Approval of January through June twenty-twenty levy freeze in the amount of one million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred two dollars and eighty cents. Approval of the twenty-twenty claims in the amount of forty-one thousand, six hundred ten dollars. Approval of June twenty-twenty settlement of school excise in the amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred dollars and sixty-six cents. Approval of the excess surplus claim in the amount of nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Approval of the twenty-twenty June settlement sewer lanes and drains of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and fourteen cents. Does anyone here have any questions about any of those? Yes?
What's the classified forest?
Well, you know, I just underlined that a lot here. Um, I haven't, that's why I haven't seen that before. How does that work?
This is the first time we've had that. It's part of the taxes when somebody has their, uh, forest land in what's considered classified forest to get lower taxes. And then they sell it or whatever, then we have to collect back taxes.
So, it's a tax thing?
It's a tax thing, and the county receives twenty-five percent of that, and the state receives seventy-five percent of it.
I thought you meant it was the petrified forest and just misspelled.
Yeah, right.
She just scored. She scored. Say what else? Yes?
I'm just curious. You have the June twenty-twenty F I T and C V E T distribution, then you have another one for twenty-twenty of the same two funds.
Every time you write a check, you have to have a claim docket. The first one is for everybody, all the entities. The second one is the county's.
I'm just curious why...
Right.
They weren't all in one claim.
As soon as he read that, I thought someone was gonna ask me that.
I couldn't get past the petrified forest thing.
And this, I'll tell you what the C V E T and F I T are. F I T is financial institution tax, and C V E T is commercial vehicle faceless tax.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve all claims presented.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to approve all claims. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Steve is busy signing over here.
And I was getting sloppy earlier. Well, you had these things.
Oh, you said you want those?
No, but those are yours. I probably got that one.
Bear witness, we got beautiful sun.
I think you need to start with our number five minutes to get through that stuff.
I think we can have all those.
Doug, were you busy with the leak?
No, not really. Not as busy as I thought I might be.
I was talking to the prosecutor, and he had a twenty-minute rest.
He wasn't busy Thursday night, I don't...
Did you have any fireworks injuries?
Not that I know of. Not that I heard.
I see we heard about it too, I guess we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't have any.
Locking the flames though, probably.
Yes.
They were setting them off around my house at midnight, Sunday night. Go to work.
We're too festive, a little limited back there. Custodian, keep...
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
I'm going over some of the documents and contracts that we currently have in place. One of them is the elevator. Um, I come across a service contract, um, Tyson Corp. They adopted the AMCO elevator service contract. I don't know if you guys have this one. Um, but with this one here, it just states that it was signed and put into place on ten sixteen and nineteen ninety-five. And it's a contract that every five years that if, um, we don't decline service from them, it just kept on renewing itself. So, we have ninety days to file, um, something with them saying that we're going to accept them, or we're going to go with a different customer, um, for service for... So, that gives us seven sixteen. So, um, not very much time at all. The two that I have found, it's Tyson Corp., they redid, um, they revised their contract. It's no longer AMCO, it's an actual, um, Tyson Corp., uh, contract. The difference between that and the B C S, um, as you can see, that, um, Tyson Corp. on their contract, they'd apply their contract like we have had. Um, B C R is a one year. The monthly rates, um, about twenty-five dollars difference between the two. Um, the mechanic rates, um, three hundred thirty-five dollars an hour for Tyson Corp. At five hundred seventy dollars overtime rate after the hours, weekend hours, or after five P M. Um, B C R is a hundred and fifty, um, for the mechanic, and two fifty-five for overtime. Now, look, looking at the numbers, uh, we've had Tyson Corp. for a long, long time. They know our system, they've been working on it, which makes me a real reluctant to continue their service. But I challenge both of these, um, service contracts here to look at our elevator because historically, from the data that I've read, they have presented options to modernize, not renew, you know, not a whole new elevator, but modernize it to get it up to par. One of the biggest names was the power unit. Um, Tyson Corp. was the only, um, customer that we, that came back with thinking out of the box. We're breaking stuff down so that way it's not a long sum cost to modernize it, getting it up to par. Their biggest issue, um, knowledge for this system is the power units. So, I, as their prices and their rates are higher, they have longevity of knowledge for our system. And plus, they came back with me with inaction, a plan of action to modernize our system where it still puts us in, um, compliance for what we are at currently. Um, but once the process starts with any modernization of that elevator, um, when it gets finally completed, it would still be compliant even being modernized without having to put a new shaft in and everything else. So, they did think outside the box where it's not a long sum, but I've seen in most of the communication in the past from them and previous custodians, um, where it was hundreds of thousands of dollars for modernization, where they said they could do it in like a four-year plan and break it down to where it's like only thirty thousand this year, maybe thirty thousand next year. To where they can modernize it, and you're looking at power units, it's gonna be the biggest downtime, and that was three days. They could do it in three days, three large shifts. Yep. So, seeing that and, and also looking at their numbers, I was kind of real reluctant, but B C R has been really difficult to communicate going back and forth with. And we can't have that. We, we all know how many issues we have with that elevator. But since they fixed the relays in it last time, it's a little bit slower, but it hasn't had the glitches that it's had in the past where the door barely opens or it's leveling, moving while doors open. So, they kind of fixed that. That's just a temporary fix right now. So, what I'm asking you guys, um, for your opinion and your thoughts, um, seven sixteen of this month is the deadline to send notice to Tyson Corp. We accept their contract, or we're gonna go with somebody else with the B C R. So, B C R was the only other one that I could find that would work on this whole equipment.
So, basically, what is your recommendation?
After looking at the rates, my recommendation would be, even though it's a five-year contract, but I think that me and Dan, Dan is the director, um, some of the things I pointed out, I think we're on the same page. I think the Tyson Corp. would be a better deal for us because they're thinking outside the box. They know what we need. Um, they know that it's not gonna be something that they can just push on, oh, well, you know, we're gonna, here's five thousand dollars, you know, it's not gonna happen. So, B C R, I really don't know them. I don't know, um, any historical data on them whatsoever. I just know my communication to them. They presented to Pat Custodian, uh, an upgrade contract to redo the elevator completely, and that was it for the con, that was it. And talking to Pat and other people, I don't think that communication went any further than just to Custodian and B C R. Um, so, after reviewing the contracts, even knowing that they redid a new one with their name on it this time, I think Tyson Corp. would be the best one to go with.
But didn't you say you also found a glitch on the old contract? We're only looking at a hundred dollars a month for any more?
So, when Tyson Corp. was brought on, um, they adapted or adopted the AMCO contract. I don't know any history about the AMCO contract. Um, it was AMCO that first would they hear before, well, they adopted the... Tyson Corp. adopted the AMCO contract, which basically was a five-year, every five-year renewal, automatic renewal. In the contract, it states that monthly charge of a hundred dollars, um, was what we'd be charged for monthly service rate. In that contract, I don't see, unless Ted saw something else that I did not see.
Now, there's a, uh, there's a adjustment of cost in that contract. It didn't require any kind of documentation either to adjust the price. It was in the, uh, page five, it's, uh, page five. Above price subject annual adjustment due to increase or decrease in the cost of the labor materials. So, there's, it doesn't say any more than that. So, they, they had a legal right to do it. We had a legal right to question it at the time uh, to challenge them on the justification for any increase, but it, it was in there.
Then I know, okay, nice to get it over.
It's the same in the, uh, other ones too.
Correct, yeah, I saw that in the new ones.
They've got five, up to five percent annual. So, it starts out at two hundred a month, and they can increase that annually, uh, total five months annually. And if you go with a, and, and so over a term of, it's got initial five-year terms, so you could go up like five percent, up to five percent a year. Let's see what that...
So, since ninety-five, after reading their, um, current contract in place, it started out at a hundred dollars. There was no communication about the increase of that time frame. It's currently, we are now paying two hundred and ninety-three dollars a month. Um, my question to Dan about this, um, which led to him creating a new contract, he's giving this to me, and saying that he can drop our current two ninety-three down to two hundred dollars a month, um, to help us out, and then he gave us these worth five percent like Ted was just talking about with the increase. This is more laid out. Um, it's removed a lot of the gray areas, which I caught, found in B C R contract. B C R contract didn't even list any mechanic rates, the overtime rates, operational hours until I got the one that you guys have now. Um, I told him he had to revise it if he wanted even a chance to be part of the communication on this. Um, so, he redid all of it, um, which of course, he put it there subject to increases annually based on cost of living and stuff like that. Um, still with this, I still think Tyson Corp. would still be the, the better... That's...
Talking about the home access gold service agreement.
Yes, yes, that's right. But it is a five-year contract. The other one, the B C R shows a one-year.
Well, gentlemen, what do you think?
The rates are, I mean, the overtime rates, I'm not too worried about because how many times are they here? Unless there's a special event, something happens, even if that, something for them to even show up. So, most of the times, they're here first thing in the morning when we're here.
Well, we gotta have the... Gotta have the maintain. If he hasn't been happy with the previous one, I'll say he's in there. He did his homework.
Yeah, with them, with Tyson Corp. updating their contract and everything else and put, and laying things out a little bit easier to understand, it makes it easier across the board for you guys to understand. And if there's any question for, um, we can actually go at them now, understanding, you know, any kind of increase or stuff like that.
Ted, did you have a chance to go over that?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's got a ninety-day notice if you're not renewed.
After five years?
Yeah, like this one.
Yeah, anytime. Uh, no, it's not at any time. You can only, uh, you're locked in for five years. And you gotta catch the ninety-day notice before the, in the five years for not going into automatic extension fires.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing now with the AMCO. We've been locked in. I caught it, caught it, discussing with Pat. This is the ninety-day mark. We have until seven sixteen to send a notice. That we're gonna continue with the new contract that they have in place, or we're gonna go with somebody else. B C R is not too happy with them.
Word counts hasn't really said much about these, but you know, uh, used to be not, you're not supposed to obligate the, uh, you know, board, obligating future boards, you know, beyond your term, you know, and to change. But, uh, this, I haven't seen that in forest, and I haven't seen it mentioned with any of the seminars or any of the bulletins or in the manual, anything anymore. So, I, I think they realize that you gotta go longer term to, uh, get an economic advantage. So, I don't see anything wrong with it. I wouldn't go any longer than five years. But the important thing is, you know, people change in office, and how are you gonna get on better, your market sort of, it doesn't slide on by.
We're all signing for ten years, really.
Or we...
We're, we're all signing for ten years, we think, because we have chances of missing that ninety day, you know?
They need to go on past that, we missed it again.
I don't know if they would consent to a, uh, just a five-year term and, and, and leave it at that or not.
I can, I can ask those questions.
If, if they would, that's a lot safer, because that's, that's obviously probably what happened.
Yeah, that's over and now since ninety-five. Every five years, it's just renewed, and no one's ever really caught it.
Right, yeah, since ninety-five.
Since ninety-five.
So, my...
Well, they, they might have caught it, they just, actually just renewed it.
Yeah, sure.
Custodian just went ahead and...
My suggestion would be if, if the board defined to approve the contract, is to approve it for five years. But, uh, say that their preference is that it, that it end at five years unless it's renewed, and that would be very simple to change in the, in the document.
I see what you're saying.
But your salesman probably can't do that. I mean, you're, uh, it has to be approved by a manager, it says, so...
I can ask Dan.
In our contract, do you have the sixteen?
That, that's the ninety day mark.
Oh.
Yeah, ten sixteen, ninety-five was when it was, um, activated or, um, established. So, we have seven sixteen to, um, dispute it with somebody else.
You definitely don't want that to slip by.
Yeah.
So, I have your...
And that's made out of, of our contract over here.
Correct, of another five years. So, I, I can give him a couple of days to respond with the, so that way we have a set date, you know, in five, of five years, and that way it doesn't just slip by and automatically get tied into another five years.
Ted, didn't you say we could... How can we structure this? So, we're, we're saying we want it for five years.
Well, and you wanna go ahead and authorize notice of termination of the existing contract.
Right, correct.
That's one that you can do as a secret motion. Uh, and to authorize the chairman to sign the new contract, uh, with the request that they make for the five-year term and request that they, uh, change the, change it so it has to be, it has to be renewed and not, um, and that's your preference.
And if they don't, then what's our next step?
Well, I mean, you're, you're approving it, you know?
Yeah, we, the new contract, the new one, it's not subject to be having to be applied to...
Yeah, you don't have to write that down.
And you can bring that, I mean, we got ninety days to, to get that worked out, right?
Correct, with a new contract, correct. Any AMCO, I'm assuming AMCO, I have a contract for them.
Do you think they have a new contract in front of you for this one?
Yes.
Well, I think the motion would go ahead and make take the current contract, send notice. And, uh, that's all we need for now. I think we want to present.
We got a motion and a second to discontinue the service from the company that we've had since ninety-five. Is that right?
On what day? I mean, so it'll be on July sixteen?
Well, I think the contract goes till the end of the year.
It'd be in October.
No, so, for the current contract we have in place, um, seven sixteen is our deadline to switch over to the Tyson Corp. new contract, which is the gold service agreement. Or, um, the AMCO contract just goes away, it's because Tyson Corp. is no longer using the AMCO. They've switched over to this one. So, I'm assuming what'll happen is if we don't send them notice, we'll automatically adapt or adopt the new Tyson Corp. contract. So, I can get ahold of Dan, who is the... So I can get ahold of Dan, who is the director for Tyson Corp, and give him my contact to see if he can push our date to the twentieth um, for the actual termination and renewal. As long as we can get the contract updated to show that in five years, we want the contract to either end or we have to submit for a renewal instead of it just automatically removing the automatic renewal from the contract.
Right, that's correct. The best question I think was when does our service that we currently have end?
Seven sixteen is when we have to send notice. Ten sixteen would be the actual end date, ninety days. So we have plenty of time.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. I call for a vote. All in favor of Steve's motion of canceling our contract, continuation of the contract with our present supplier. Say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Okay?
Correct. And lastly, let's real quick, so I'm doing my due diligence and research for Dropbox options. Um, there's a packet. I believe everybody received on different options that I have found. Um, a little, um, a little vague on the information on how big of a Dropbox that we need. Because we also have to consider the fact that there's gonna be a lot of signage, because it can't be anything in postal mail. It's just all, it's all private use. Uh, the other stipulations that are have to be on, no. So, um, the first one is pretty much just maybe a couple of office, Dropbox, mail. It's got security. It's post-mounted, so it would just mount straight to the concrete, um, on the sidewalk. North side where the void is for the stairs. You not have one though? I've got, I've got an extra one.
Your packet with the clip.
Here, I have an extra one.
Thank you. Somebody's got new stuff on this pile.
I don't know. If I can do it, I will.
This is a curb-side mount outside. It's weatherproof. It's got security, um, anti-theft. You can see, it's just post-mounted. Nothing spectacular.
So the seventy-two oh six one we have here is?
Yeah, that's the one that.
Is a post-mounted one?
Yes, post-mounted.
Post, we have to put under it?
Uh, it comes with the post, um, comes with the post mounting bracket on the bottom.
I see it on.
On the last page or second, yeah, last page.
Mailbox black seventy-one fifty-five surface mount base plate.
So you just put some concrete, screws in the ground, mount it, it's.
What you wanna do, bowl it down or corner your concrete?
I've pulled it down. No way you're gonna have to worry about. Okay. Um, because where the sidewalk on the north side, um, doesn't go anywhere, yeah, the steps. I've mounted somewhere, any of these options, I would mount it in a position where cameras can catch, at least get facial recognition, just in case something was to happen or something questionable. That way we can at least look at the timeframe for when people are dropping off the mail. Um, the other option is something that we discussed before is just like regular postal mailbox, Dropbox. Steel curb-side, it mount, just the same way, you bolt it to the concrete. And.
Do you have prices on these?
Yes.
I don't got them. I don't know what to do.
So the steel curb-side one looks like the regular postal, is nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars?
Now wait a minute, that's the one where we're mounting a post down either.
No.
That's the big one up here that's on the picture?
Yes.
Is how much?
Nine sixty-seven. They all come power-coded. Look, price by yet one too though.
The same page you were. Ted, what was the price on that first one?
I'm pulling it up right now.
That and the original was like four hundred dollars, I think.
Ted, would you have any idea how big of a box would be, uh, there are so many stuff we're gonna get? You've seen, you've seen the mail come in, I'm sure.
Well, it won't be for mail.
It'll be for mail, it'll just be for people.
It'll be for, um, the treasurer funded it during, um, pack season. And the recorder one, just for like deeds and things like that. They come in, probably an envelope, running by fourteen or any.
Level size.
Yeah.
The mailbox itself is two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
The woman post is how much?
Two hundred and thirty-nine dollars just for the mailbox.
Two thirty-nine?
Correct. And then for the, an eighty-nine dollars for the post and mounting brackets to concrete.
You can see that with only twelve layers, so I don't know if that would be.
Two thirty-nine and eighty-nine.
You know, like FedEx.
Three twenty-eight.
Or the white, they did, I don't know if it was.
They're eleven and a half by fourteen, I think.
It's gonna be deep, it's gonna be deeper than that.
Plus, but they knew, I mean, I'll be in love soon.
I'm not even sure if I even want.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question, was, uh, we need to first of all establish our, do we need a box? We have kicked this around. We have not said we don't need a box, but we have really concluded that we do need a box.
I know we got security out there, but it'd be like a rope around it and yank it.
Yeah, they pull ATM stuff.
Then who's responsible for the money that was supposed to be in? I guess.
I don't know. We have, uh, insurance that would, uh, cover a theft or stuff like that. Ted, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If, uh, Steve brought up if, uh, if someone just yanks this thing out and steals the whole box and then next phase somebody comes in and says, well, I put my money in there. How's that work? Are we covered on insurance on that or?
Well, the property would be insured. Uh, the taxpayer would have to bring some evidence that they had, uh, deposited or paid it, uh, you know, either by check or something. Uh, I'm sure this, I don't know if this has come up before or not, but, uh, we counted with each other if, uh, it was lost. The taxpayer would have to, uh.
Murder proof?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I would assume that, you know, if, uh, somebody's taxes haven't been paid and they, uh, the thing would be probably given an opportunity, I think the treasurer would give them a chance to let them find that right away.
So maybe with a check, they probably have some.
Well, yeah, they're not supposed to put cash in the box. It's rare to not put cash in their box.
How would they prove that with a check? I mean, anybody can say, wrote a check. I mean, how would they prove that? I don't understand that.
Well, I mean, I, I, I assume that they probably have developed some kind of affidavit that I, I, I paid it and, and they'll probably take, I would think treasurer would take an affidavit that, that it was destroyed and, and, but they would have to make the key payment of it, you know?
And if you have to then stop paying on that old old check.
Yeah. The county's not liable to work here.
True.
It must have mattered too.
Yeah, but then it's not on us.
They'd have to argue with those.
I don't think there would have been an need if it wasn't in this COVID.
It's just convenience. I, this one here says US mail on it, so.
Correct, and that's one of the, I've reached out to several of these to confirm that that can be removed. And which goes into the, you know, asking how much signage needs to be on these, you know?
I think that one, you're on the first one, the seventy-two oh six, which I should, I think it's got the option of a Dropbox on the bottom and a top of where you can put your outgoing mail to the postman, because it's got a red flag on it. Red flag, so you can put your out mail going in. And the post office will have, will happen to have a key to that, a digital option. I don't like that option.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, they would like that. And the red, and the red tag, the red flag will come off of it. It wouldn't, it'd just be private use Dropbox with warehouse with, you know, restriction signs of what can, can't be placed into the box.
Well, gentlemen, let's first decide. Looks like we have a range here of, uh, probably three fifty to a thousand dollars. Do we want one of these?
We've had one for how long?
Well, eighteen twenty-eight.
I don't wanna be mistaken, but I don't think we need one, because we got the post office, we're taking the job away from the US post office, we have this in there. I'd rather to put in a post office mailbox and have it delivered that way. Give them more options to have, send a certified, a notice received.
What do you say? I, I mean, I agree with you. It's convenient, but there are some issues. My idea that you can, as far as the painful is, I don't know. Signage, I think the signage, this one box, if it did, the signs on it's gonna be bigger than the box.
I mean, there'd be a lot of stipulations that have to be on there.
I mean, I'm a mailing person myself, but this year was a different circumstance. Post office will, I mean, I should.
Well, our recorder also has said she has a lot of times this stuff needs to be Dropboxed. It's not just, uh, those are the only two that have commented, is recorder and treasurer. Perhaps we oughta get Penny over here if she's in today and have her, uh, tell us why she needs it.
No, she's, she doesn't online anymore.
Moving that way and off the bar.
I'm, I'm just gonna make a motion that we don't do more Dropbox.
You don't like it, you're a good guy, you're just.
Yeah, I mean, looks at her, it's online. Unless you've got somebody who just refuses to use it and gets it out.
So you're making a motion, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Says?
No, no Dropbox.
No Dropbox.
US post office.
Comes across to you, Lauren.
Yeah, I don't know.
Sorry, Lauren. I, I don't know about, I'm just afraid of the responsibility of it for the county.
The size of the box gets in there every day.
I don't think that works for you.
I don't either, really. I think you probably were talking about a thousand dollars. That's what I'm thinking too.
Then, then somebody put those US mail in and we would know it's marked.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if you do the one, I'd rather not do the one that looks like a mailbox.
I like the one that's like the last one.
The second, yeah, this one.
The, the vault, no, the very last one is one of the.
One of the two thousand dollars?
Yeah, the one's a eight hundred ninety-nine plus eighty-nine shipping and handling. It's got the most security.
Which one's that?
It's the very last one. It's the vault, full service.
Full service, how much is that?
Eight ninety-nine plus the ninety-dollar shipping and handling.
Then the signage, do you have to have to put on it?
Well, it is, right, so you have one, a period of one.
We're looking at a thousand dollars.
Sixteen. Plus, plus the custodian's time installation and hardware to put it in.
The very last page is, uh, one that, um, treasurer, I quote on.
Do you want any kind of?
Pardon?
Do you want any kind of?
If she can. Nine hundred bucks plus ninety-dollar shipping. That just sets it out there on ground. Let me go mount it down.
Yeah, it's got, when you open up the bottom, it's got the holes.
Wow.
I just put, you know, concrete screws mounted to the concrete.
But where you're wanting to put it, that's marble, not the concrete.
Well, the concrete sidewalk right out there in front of steps.
Oh, off the steps.
Correct, yeah, down to the bottom.
There's the stairs where it is.
Right.
For one office, you know, five. She would have to be the one to take care of it.
Yeah. I have had, one person comment besides the two office owners and secondly, like, no, two.